Okay, everybody, we're getting ready to start the meeting here in just a moment. Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Dania Beach City Commission Final Budget Hearing and Regular Meeting, Tuesday, September 24th, 2024, 7:00 PM. Could we please have a call to order?
Mayor Ryan.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lawland.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner James.
Here.
Commissioner Salvino.
Here.
City Attorney Bootses.
Here.
Here.
Deputy City Manager, Candito Sosa Cruz.
Here.
There you have a quote.
Thank you. If we could all please take a moment of silence, please? Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, getting down to business. Item 3.1 is for our budget public hearing items. Eve, please.
A resolution of, excuse me, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Dania Beach as required by the City Charter and Section 200.065 of the Florida statutes approving the millage rate necessary to be levied for the fiscal year 2024-2025 for operating purposes, establishing the debt millage approved by the electorate, providing for a public hearing when and where objections may be heard and questions concerning the same will be answered, providing for conflicts and effective date. And I, if you don't mind, I'd just like to read the script I have. The, this announcement is for tonight's budget hearing for the City of Dania Beach, Florida, for fiscal year 2024-2025. The proposed operating municipal millage rate will be 5.9998 mils, which reflects no change from the city's current fiscal year millage rate. This operating millage rate represents a 4.99% increase over the rollback rate of 5.7147 mils, as computed in accordance with the provisions of Section 200.065 subsection 1 of the Florida statutes. The voter-approved debt service millage rate is 0.0985 mils in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 200 of the Florida statutes. The city's aggregate millage rate is 6.0983 mils, which is 5.9998 mils for operating and 0.0985 for debt service.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is anybody want to speak on this item? Okay, Ms. Shalifor?
Yep.
I have you on for 3.1 and 3.2. Okay. Please state your name and address.
I won't consume that much time. Um, I'm just here basically to give-
Name and address, please.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Mr. Mayor. Brenda Shalifor, 814 Northwest 10th Avenue, Melaleuca Gardens, just south of the airport. I'm here to issue a challenge. How much can you save between now and this time next year? I'm not going to go through your budget. I'm not going to say, please don't increase my taxes. I know it's going to move forward, but I'll give you that challenge. There's a lot in there that's nice to have, isn't necessary, as it relates to the way we tell people what our taxes are. I'm somewhat disheartened about the misinformation. I understand you're not increasing the military. I understand I have assessments. I understand how you come up with it. Bottom line, your revenues are increasing, but my taxes are not decreasing. My levels of service are not increasing. My quality of life has not increased. So I just don't get it. And again, I'm not going to go through every little budget item. I'm throwing it back at you electeds. You're here, you're the guardians of the gate. You're elected to watch out for us. See how much you can save. Because at home, if we don't have the money, we don't get it. We don't have that revenue income stream. We don't have the ability to just raise taxes. So the challenge is, see if you can't save something and roll it back next year. That's the challenge. I'm looking for electors who are looking out for us, the taxpayers. And these increases are outrageous, given there's no increase in the level of services. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shalifor. Challenge accepted. Okay, is there any other public hearings? Any, any other public comments? Okay, seeing none. Commissioner James?
I make a motion to approve item 3.1.
I have a motion to approve item 3.1. Vice Mayor Lawland?
Second.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. All right, item 3.1 passes. Okay, item 3.2, please, Eve.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Dania Beach as required by the City Charter and Section 265 of the Florida statutes approving the city's final budget for the fiscal year 2024-2025, providing for a public hearing when objections will be heard and questions and concerns about the budget will be answered, providing for conflicts and an effective date. This is a finance item. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? This is a public hearing. Is anybody want to speak from the public? Ms. Shalifor, I, I have you.
I presume you've all, I know you have all received my memo.
There you go.
Um, I hope you take the time to read it. As you know, it starts with, "You can put lipstick on a pig, but it's still a pig." Make it look good, but it's still a pig. So I'll just give you the executive summary I have here on taxes, assessments, and the budget. There needs to be a little bit more transparency and accountability for taxing and spending. Revenues are up, taxes should go down, to the extent possible while maintaining necessary services. That's so someone can't start a spin and say, well, then your services will go down. No, they don't. Taxes should be a function of property value times the millage rate. That way, we know everyone's paying their fair share. We know there's equity among the taxpayers. I'd also like you to please consider a moratorium on increased density until our infrastructure, including roadways, can handle what we already have. We need to rein in the budget. Once again, the challenge, how much can you save? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shalifor. Okay, um, Deputy, Deputy City Manager, I know you wanted to address some of the comments.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Deputy City Manager, Candito Sosa Cruz, for everyone in the audience and at home. And I echo what you stated as far as accepting the challenge, but I do want to clarify and provide some, some factual details and numbers because when, when someone states that there's misinformation, I just want to clarify that everything that the city has stated or put out is factual, is transparent, and it's accurate information. We have had meetings, public meetings, we have advertised our budgets, and there, there hasn't been any questions or, or emails or discussions other than, than tonight. But I want to start off with, with our budget because we're very proud of the work we do in the city, and we work very hard for the residents, the businesses, and the visitors of Dania Beach. In the last three years, we've added 26 first responders that include law enforcement and firefighters. So when, when, when someone says that there's nothing, there's no return in the budget, this return increases safety and security in the city. It increases the response time when someone calls a paramedic, when someone calls a fire department, or when someone calls law enforcement. That's 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Additionally, we are, we are commencing our groundbreaking of the largest storm drainage project in the city's history. This is a $30 million storm drainage project that's going to be in the southeast. This is a project that the residents of Dania Beach have been waiting for over a decade, and we're starting the construction this Thursday. Additionally, we've completed our parks master plan. Every single park in the city is going to be updated and will be brand new, starting with CW Thomas, and that's a $21 million renovation. That's going to include a brand-new indoor gymnasium, brand-new rooms for, for aftercare, for summer camps, brand-new pool, and a brand-new football field for the community. After that, we will be working in PJ Millie, Frost Park, and then Frost Park. This is over $40 million investment in the city. Again, something the city has never had before. Additionally, the city created what's called the Beam Team. It's a beautification, excellence, and maintenance team. Their job is to ensure that the city is clean every single day, every single night of the year. They pick up debris, they pick up trash, especially illegal dumping that occurs in alleys and at nighttime. That way, in the morning, the streets are clean, the streets are safe. Additionally, the city has created what's called Beach Rangers. Beach Rangers work at our city beach. They ensure the beach is clean, safe, and people are following our code. On top of that, the city has been able to invest in stormwater pumps. So when the streets flood, we're able to mobilize our pumps at anywhere in the city, any time of the night, to ensure that the streets are pumping water and the homes are not being flooded. On top of that, we have brand-new VAC trucks. These trucks suck up water to ensure your storm drainages are clean, and again, the streets are safe. So I just want to make sure that everyone understands when the city puts out a budget, there's details to the budget, and we're looking out for every single resident, every single business in the city to improve your quality of life, your safety, and your security. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Sosa Cruz. Any more public, public comments? All right, seeing none. Commissioner James?
Yes, I have a comment and a motion. I just wanted to say, we have several meetings, and I know that this commission in particular, and I've served with a few different commissions, has been the most strenuous on assessment fees. And so, we are presented with a set of assessment fees, and, you know, our CFO, I know, we really get on his nerves because we challenge him to keep it as affordable as we can for our residents, even to the fact to where we didn't even increase any assessment fees for one of them last year because of concerns that we had, that it would be too big of a jump. We go through this budget, and I've lived here my entire life. The city is different. We're the first city in Broward County, and there are a lot of things that has to be changed and elevated in order for us to maintain a level of excellence for our children and for the future. And whereas I do understand that certain assessment fees slightly may be increased or raised, I also understand what comes with living in a growing city. And so I am proud that we have elected officials and a city team that, you know, has given us, and, and I heard a comment about how much can we save. We have the most in our reserves that we've ever had. We have a financial team that makes sure that we also have a hurricane fund if a hurricane was to come here, and it won't come directly out of our reserves. A lot of these things are discussed at meetings that I implore all of the residents that's under my voice to really become more engaged in these meetings, because this is the final budget meeting. We've had workshops, we've had presentations before the workshops, and we've had two public meetings, and we all take seriously any comments that our residents bring us. And so I, I'm very proud of the budget that's before us. It, it is conservative when it comes down to things that we want to do, we can't do, because we have to maintain a healthy reserve. We are a growing city. It's going to cost more. Sometimes, we don't get certain grants, and for the quality of our residents, we pay extra to have three firemen instead of two. And so those are things that we kind of don't see, but we're pushing almost 50,000 residents, and it's going to continue to cost the city more money to provide more services. Thank you, Deputy City Manager, for everything that you've shared, but I, I don't take lightly us being irresponsible up here, and I don't think any of us do. And so with that, I make a motion to approve the budget 3.2.
Thank you, Mr. James. I have a motion on the table, and I have Vice Mayor Lawland.
I also wanted to say something on that, but I'd like, I'd actually like to bring Frank up, our, our CFO, and ask him a question, if you don't mind.
Good evening.
And Frank is our Director of Finance, and what, what is our Chief Financial Officer, whatever. We've done great on audits, correct?
Yes.
We get audited every year.
Yes.
And we've had no issues, correct? Not in the last several years?
Correct.
And what is our current reserve for this budget?
Well, we have, it's the highest level of reserve that we've, we've ever had in the general fund. We've had, we have a $28 million in the general fund, and that's separate from the approximately $9 million disaster reserve that we also have, and that's separate from the multimillion dollars of impact fees that are being reinvested in the community as we speak both in this budget and the coming fiscal year. So, I mean, that's just in the general fund.
So that's lots of savings in case something happens and we need it.
Correct.
And I know every year when we have this discussion about the budget, I know I have this discussion every year, we talk about potentially lowering taxes and lowering the millage rate. And I know that there's an assessment that's done every year on this. And can you explain that so that the general public can hear how that works?
Sure. So every year, what we do is, when we start our budget process, we start from zero. Every department has to re-request every line item in their department, and we, we cost out all of our personnel, and we see exactly how much we need for the year. And then we look at our revenues, and we figure out, it's a balancing act, and we see where we are. The city has been investing tremendously in the past few years, and we have a lot planned for the coming years. We've, part of my job- We've, part of my job is to ensure that we preserve the assets of the city, not just the financial assets, but also the infrastructure, the buildings, the physical assets of the city, because if we don't preserve those and we don't invest in them, it becomes more costly in the long run, and then eventually, we don't have a sustainable future that we can generate revenues and do the things we need to do down the road. So, all of you, along with the city administration, have taken tremendous steps forward in the past few years to do those long-needed, much-delayed investments into the community that preserve our future. And we take all that into account every year when we balance the budget and we see exactly what the needs are. Based on what the needs are right now, there's no opportunity to lower the millage rate.
And if I'm not mistaken, if you do lower the millage rate, it becomes a large amount of money that comes out of the budget and a small impact on the individual residents. Isn't that true?
Correct. You know, for what amounts to a lot of money for the city in the aggregate, it doesn't amount to so much on an individual basis per household, and when you lower the millage rate, it takes it that much more to get it back to where it was. You actually need to increase it on a percentage basis more to go back to where you were. So you actually start to dig yourself into a hole because you need more to make up the ground going forward. So, we don't take the millage rate lightly. We want to look at it and make sure that it's right where it needs to be at the time, and currently with the investments that we're making, it wouldn't be sensible to recommend a lowering of the millage rate.
Could be done in the future at some point.
Potentially.
Right, but at this point in time, it's just not the right time to do it.
Correct.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you. And I will second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second for Item 3.2. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, Item 3.2 passes. All right, another year, passing the budget. Thanks, everybody, for their hard work on that. Thank you to the commission. Thank you to our staff, our CFO, our city manager, our attorney, and thank you to our residents also. All right, up for Item 4.1, for our presentation, special event approvals. This is a service award for Mr. Louis Brown, and this is a Public Services Department. This is sponsored by Commissioner Tamara James. You want to pop, oh, sorry.
Speak from here. Thank you, I'll go down in a second, but I'll speak from here. I've probably known this former employee since I was a little bitty girl, and he's been working and serving our city since I was three years old. And I thought that with his level of service in public services and what he is dedicated to this city, that we should honor him with a presentation as a commission for his tremendous work that he has done. It is a selfless act, number one, to work in public services or to just serve a city in a capacity, and I don't take it lightly when someone really dedicates their life to this city. And, you know, Louis has been here and seen many changes in this city, and has worked through them all, and I just want to congratulate him and his family on a happy retirement and all of what he has accomplished here in the city of Dania Beach. So I am going to come down and read the plaque that Linda from HR, if you want to come down, Linda, she helped with this presentation, her and Maxine, and I just think that, you know, from human resources and public services in our city, that we recognize and we honor those who serve our city so well. Give Louis a hand. This reads, "In recognition for 37 years of dedicated service." You all want to come down and take a photo?
Say anything? Yeah, I'll hold it while you talk.
Tamara about to make me tear up, but I'm gonna keep it short. 37 years ago, actually 38 because I worked part-time in 86, 37 years ago, I never thought that I was going to be here this long. I want to introduce my family. My oldest daughter, Erica, my oldest son, Louis, my youngest son, Desiree. They all started their own careers, and I remind you, when I started here, I was kidless, and I was a young kid just getting out of high school. Long time. Yeah, I remember you when you was little. That don't make me old, but... I just want to thank the whole commission for allowing this. Even you, Candido, which you're not up and sitting down, but city manager, I've seen a lot of them come. I've seen a whole lot of city managers come, and when they come, they stay a few years, and before I know it, they're not here no more. But this commission and this new human resource, from human resource to management, I've never seen it this good in my 37 years of being here. So I'm proud to be here. I grew up in this city. I was born and raised here. My parents were pioneers, and doing what I love, hopefully, probably in the near future I'll come back, because I miss it already, I'll tell you. Thank you, everybody.
This is for the family. Everybody take one step back. This is a tight shop here. Do you want the commission to go back up? We can do one like that, too. I got everybody right here, smile. And then the commission, if you could go back up, and we'll have the family.
Wait, 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 let me just take one for the family. I'm being bossy, I know. Thank you.
Okay. Family saying, commission, go back up, and we're going to do a different version.
Thank you. All right, let's go. Picture. Marco, polo.
Try to stay in order.
Are we centered?
Yes. Okay, everybody, big smiles. Hi, cutie. Okay. We got it.
Thank you. That's what we had.
I've been driving around all town as a lot. Not when I was young, right? Just wait until I was little.
You just want the approval of the proclamation? You're not going to read it? Oh, you're reading it next, okay. Let's give it up one more time for Mr. Brown, 37 years. All right. Real privilege. Okay. Item 4.2 is a request for approval of a proclamation for Hispanic Heritage Month. This is sponsored by Vice Mayor Llewellyn. Do I have approval? Okay. We have approval for the proclamation. All right, and presentations. For Item 4.3, this is the Solid Waste Authority Budget Presentation, and this is my item. Ralph, you can put it up. Okay, basically, I just want to give this public presentation very briefly on what the county's doing. Really, the county's not doing it. The Solid Waste Authority is its own authority, it's its own government body, and we just, they've been working on this probably for seven to eight years, and we just finally established the governing board, and we have an executive board, I'm on the executive board, and we just hired an executive director, okay? So, basically what this is, is 28 cities in the county got together in an agreement, and we all chip in money based on the size of our city, and we're determining the decisions that we make with waste, recycling, you know, transportation of refuse for the next five, 10, 20, 40 years. So, it's a major undertaking that we have here with the Solid Waste Authority, and yeah, the mission statement, to protect long-term public health and safety and welfare. And that's kind of what the solid waste that we have, the way that's processed right now, is it's more cost-efficient, and it's not so much environmentally friendly and health-friendly. So, what we're working on is ultimately a zero-waste county, and we know we're working with waste management on this, and, you know, all the other municipalities are a part of it as well, and we have experts, we digest the information, we try to come up with best practices. Our executive director, Todd Storty, is actually from California, and he was working in the waste disposal business in California his whole entire career, and they don't even have incineration over in California. So he had to take a class on incinerating garbage when he came over here, and we're ultimately trying to get away from incineration, but we might have to make difficult decisions when it comes to where to place a new incinerator, if we need to add one, and, you know, upgrading the incinerators and how we use them. Right now, with our existing system that we have, a lot of the recycling that you put in your recycling bins, it ultimately ends up in a landfill. It doesn't really get recycled. I think, you know, the numbers right now are maybe like 20% to 30% of it really gets recycled, and most of it gets put in a landfill. And if you're not following along what's going on with the county, you know, they're trying to raise, you know, Mount Trashmore, you know, the Monarch Trash Hill, they want to raise it higher, and, you know, we're talking about everything from transporting the garbage out of the county. Dade County's currently doing it right now. They're transporting the refuse out of the county by rail, and that's one thing I like to say. I like to say we were created on the railroad, and the railroad will be our salvation when it comes to dealing with solid waste. So, yeah, we're looking at cost-efficient ways, best practices all around the world, you know, everywhere from Sweden to California, you know, even over in Asia, seeing what best practices that they have, because we have to be on top of, really, it comes down to technology, and it comes to public awareness and public education. That's what we're trying to do right now. That's what I'm trying to do right now, is public awareness of what this undertaking is with the Solid Waste Authority. And they encourage public input, public feedback. They would really like to hear from all the residents, especially residents from Dania Beach, Broward's oldest city, Broward's first city. We have, you know, the, it's called, I think, the win, I forget what it's called, it's the trash that we have over on 441, just in Davie. It's just on the edge of our city. So we're affected by that landfill. It's a private landfill, but we're still affected by it. And yes, this talks about the environmental benefits that we have. We want to lower greenhouse gas emissions, conserve natural resources. The environmental benefits are substantial and drastically reduce our landfill use, and we ultimately want to be sustainable in the county. You know, what we are located as a county, we're stuck between the Everglades and the Atlantic Ocean. We don't have much space to go, so we have to come up with innovative ways of how to dispose of our waste. And it's not like we're in the middle of the state, you know, I go, I'm in the middle of the country, let alone, and it seems like some of those folks have endless land, they have endless opportunities. You know, when you get further north, they just dig a giant hole, and our situation is extremely unique when it comes to the whole entire world with, you know, how sensitive the Everglades is and with the Atlantic Ocean. So, yeah, with a couple of updates, we had the governance set up, we had the executive director recruitment, it took from March to April, we moved rather quickly on that. Authority establishment, we finally established the authority. We're going over operations. Now, we have our finances, the budget right now, I think, is about $2 million a year, and we're going to work on our future planning. Okay, here's a little financial analysis, the $2 million. I just wanted to put this out here, this is accessible, anybody could access this PowerPoint, you could contact me or the city if you have any questions, but I just really wanted to put this out here so the public knew what we are doing as a city and as a county. Okay, so that's about it, and like I said, we want community involvement, public feedback, and ongoing engagement. And this is kind of a call to action because we need support from the board and the public, and it's vital that we can use this to initiate these initiatives and achieving our reduced waste goals overall. Okay? Thank you, everybody. That was a presentation by your mayor. Okay, on 5.1, we have proclamations, and this is Human Resource Professional Day. This is my proclamation. All right. Come on up, come on up. All right, you guys are all matching, too? Yeah, just gather up here, gather up, gather up. Linda, I'm going to read the proclamation, then you could say a couple of words, or do you want to say a couple of words and then let me read the proclamation? All right, I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation. Okay. This is a proclamation from the Office of the Mayor of the City of Dania Beach, Florida, "Whereas the City of Dania Beach honors the Human Resources Department for the important work that they do to support all city team members. And whereas HR professionals help team members adapt to an ever-changing and competitive environment while responding to workplace needs and economic challenges. And whereas these professionals support and provide for positive organizational development and service to strategic partners to meet public service goals by recruiting and retaining top talent for employment. Recognizing employee achievements, protecting trends in the market, and providing workforce planning. Developing competitive compensation and benefit structures, facilitating change management, and preserving the integrity of the organization by ensuring compliance with state and local laws. And whereas, the City of Dania Beach Human Resources Professionals serve as leaders, business strategists, problem solvers, talent developers, cultural creators, and advocates while displaying integrity and dedication. And whereas, HR Professionals Day is an opportunity to show appreciation for Human Resource Professionals and the valuable work that they do every single day. Now, therefore, on behalf of the City of Dania Beach City Commission, I, Archibald John Ryan IV, Mayor of the City of Dania Beach, Florida, do hereby proclaim September 26, 2024, as Human Resources Professionals Day in the City of Dania Beach, Florida, and further extend appreciation to Chief Human Resources Officer Linda Gonzalez, Deputy Director Anne Mieres, Senior HR Specialist Claudia Sanchez, Compensation and Benefit Specialist Mitzi Spear, Talent Acquisition and Risk Management Specialist Farak Baltimore-Bernadine, and Human Resources Administrator Melissa Brown, for the vital services they perform, their dedication, and their relentless contributions to the City of Dania Beach. Let's give it up for HR now. And all of our new HR members who weren't named, I'm sorry if you weren't in the proclamation. All right, I didn't write it. Please say a couple of words, Linda, I'm sorry.
Hi, this is Linda Gonzalez. I just want to say thank you very much for your support to the mayor, the vice mayor, the commission, our city manager, our deputy city manager, our city attorney, our city clerk. This is such a hard-working team, and I am honored to be part of this team. Travis is, Travis Campbell was not mentioned, he's newly joined our team, and he's made a great addition, but this is, being in HR for many decades and in private and public sector, I can say that this is just one of the hardest working groups. They work very hard for you every day, for all of our employees, for our residents, as part of risk management. hard for you every day, for all of our employees, for our residents, as part of risk management. And I want to thank them from the bottom of my heart for all of their dedication and commitment, just thank you.
Thank you. Picture?
Can I say something?
Sure.
Just, you have to let her.
There we go.
Thank you, mayor, just very quickly, when Linda says they are, you all are the hardest-working team, it is such a pleasure, and not only are you hard-working, innovative, this HR team has brought so many new initiatives to the City of Dana Beach and done them at such top-quality, top-notch level, from your Get Fit Dana Beach for the Health and Wellness, you all know I'm going to miss and love my Thriving Thursdays, but it's mental health, wellness, it's a complete holistic team and what you bring to the city, it has made everyone, I've never seen public services go in and get for Thriving Thursdays, you've really made a cohesive team, and it is such a pleasure to see you all work together, and thank you for what you bring to the table, it really means a lot.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, HR. You know, they have great events here in City Hall, it's really a welcoming, family-friendly environment, it's a great team that we have, and really what HR does is they unite all of our departments together, and it's a beautiful thing to see our city employees interacting at some of these events. So, thank you very much, HR. All right, up next, we have, this is proclamation item five point two, this is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in September twenty twenty-four, and this item is sponsored by Commissioner
Thank you, mayor. If you didn't know, there's a lot of different months that we celebrate, but Childhood Cancer Awareness Month is September, it's gold for gold, and it is a very special, special guest that we have here this evening. I'm going to read the proclamation first, so that you all understand just how much childhood cancer affects so many of our families here in Dana Beach, South Florida, and around the world. So, our founder here today has just gotten back from DC and has been doing great work to advocate to help find a cure for childhood cancer. So, at this time, I'm going to read the proclamation and then invite you up. Whereas, childhood cancer is the leading cause of death by disease in children, and one in two hundred and sixty children in the United States will be diagnosed by their twentieth birthday. And whereas, forty-seven children per day, or seventeen thousand children per year, are diagnosed with cancer in the US. And whereas, eighty percent of childhood cancer patients are diagnosed late with metastatic disease. And whereas, there is a point six percent increase in incidence per year since the mid nineteen seventies, resulting in an overall incidence increase of twenty-four percent over the last forty years. And whereas, two-thirds of childhood cancer patients will have chronic health conditions because of their treatment toxicity, with one-quarter being classified as severe to life-threatening. And whereas, approximately one-half of childhood cancer families rate the associated financial toxicity due to out-of-pocket expenses as considerable to severe. And whereas, in the last thirty years, only six new drugs have been approved by the FDA to specifically treat childhood cancer. And whereas, the National Cancer Institute recognizes the unique research needs of childhood cancer and associated need for increased funding to carry this out. And whereas, too many children are affected by this deadly disease, and more must be done to raise awareness and find a cure. Now, therefore, on the behalf of the City of Dana Beach Commission and our mayor, Archibald J. Ryan the Fourth, in the City of Dana Beach, we do hereby proclaim September twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Dana Beach, and do encourage all Americans to observe Childhood Cancer Awareness Month and support this cause that deeply impacts families and communities across our country. Thank you. And at this time, Sylvia and your family, would you please come up? Introduce yourself and who you have with you, and tell us a little bit about your wonderful organization, the Mystic Force Foundation, so that we all become a little bit more aware.
Okay, thank you, thank you, mayor, commissioners. My name is Sylvia Dominguez Vanny, and I am the co-founder and executive director of the Mystic Force Foundation. The postcards that you all saw, this is my baby, and he passed away from childhood cancer. But it is my mission in life to help every child I can, and to one day have a world without childhood cancer. This beautiful family that I have over here, this is Jake, and Jake finished treatment this year and rang the bell. And that's what we need for all of our children. Not only do we need what he has, we need less toxic, more effective therapies for our children, because as the proclamation stated, our children have many problems growing, as they grow older. And what we need is more effective treatments for them. Then the only way we will find cures for our children is to raise awareness. So, thank you for helping us to do that. Some of our childhood cancers still remain terminal upon diagnosis, such as DIPG, which is an inoperable brain tumor, and it's the same brain tumor that Neil Armstrong's daughter died from in nineteen sixty-two. And we were able to send him to the moon, and all the incredible and amazing things that our world does, but we have yet to find a way to break the brain blood barrier to get potential life-saving treatments to that tumor. So, we must do better for our children, we have to, and thank you so much for helping us to raise the awareness to be able to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. For our last proclamation, this is one that we just approved, this is for Hispanic Heritage Month, and this is sponsored by Vice Mayor Llewellyn.
Good evening. Every year, we do celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month, we started doing it just a few years ago, and we would be remiss if we did not do another proclamation this year, as we always do. So, proclamation is from the Office of the Mayor, City of Dana Beach, Florida, whereas each year, the United States observes National Hispanic Heritage Month by celebrating the culture, heritage, and countless contributions of those whose ancestors came to North America, as well as those who came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, Central America, and South America. And whereas, this year's theme is Pioneers of Change: Shaping the Future Together. This theme recognizes the many Hispanics and Latinos who have paved the way for future generations to be able to enact change and encompasses the spirit of innovation, resilience, and unity that define the Hispanic experience. And whereas, we recognize and honor the many ways that Hispanics have enriched the fabric of our society, and we rededicate ourselves to acknowledging, promoting, and supporting the advancements of Hispanics in our respective communities. And whereas, the Hispanic population of the United States is now at sixty-five point two million, constituting nineteen point five percent of the total population, and where more than thirty-four point three percent of the population of the City of Dana Beach is Hispanic or Latino. And whereas, locally, Hispanics and Latinos from diverse cultures, races, and ethnicities contribute to the vitality and uniqueness of Florida and the City of Dana Beach as residents, business owners, investors, staff, leaders, and volunteers. And whereas, Juan Ponce de Leon was the first Spanish explorer to arrive in Florida in fifteen thirteen, and Spanish heritage started the moment he named the Sunshine State Pascoa Florida, or Feast of Flowers, in honor of Spain's Easter celebration. And whereas, Hispanics have had a profound, significant, and positive influence on our country through their strong commitment to family and faith, and fully embracing the American dream via ambition, work ethic, and a great love for the United States and passion for the communities they serve. Now, therefore, on behalf of the Dana Beach City Commission and our mayor, Archibald J. Ryan the Fourth, Mayor of the City of Dana Beach, Florida, we do hereby proclaim September fifteen, twenty twenty-four, to October fifteen, twenty twenty-four, as Hispanic Heritage Month in the City of Dana Beach, and encourage all citizens of Dana Beach to join celebrating the vast contributions Hispanics and Latinos have made to the world, to our country, and to our community. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor. Okay, let's go right into our administrative reports with our deputy city manager, Candido Sosa Cruz.
Thank you, mayor. Good evening, residents. My name is Candido Sosa Cruz, deputy city manager, and tonight I'll be presenting the manager's report. There's several key, important information to share with the residents tonight. First of all, we'd like to start off with the public schools here in Dana Beach. Our city manager attended a workshop, a Broward County Public Schools workshop on Tuesday, September seventeenth, in which she was able to address the superintendent and school board members in regards to any potential closures of public schools here in Dana Beach. As everyone might know, we have three public schools in Dana Beach, and several of them, if not all, were up, were being considered to be closed. The city team, along with our electeds, have been communicating with the school board and the superintendent, and we've had very positive communication and dialogue. And part of this September seventeen workshop was to discuss all the opportunities the city could have with the Broward School Board. And part of that discussion was specifically focused on Olson, because that's really the one school that the school board continues to discuss closing. And the city manager was able to communicate that the city is heavily invested in all of our schools, and specifically, again, to Olson, we are investing over five million dollars on the Olson campus. We're going to be constructing a new track, a new track on this field, we're going to be constructing a multipurpose field, and one of our parks facilities is going to go at the Olson campus. Additionally, due to the availability of space and a lower enrollment, student enrollment that the school board wishes, the city proposed to create an emergency operations center utilizing some of this available space or empty classrooms. The school board was, the superintendent was very open to it, his executive team liked the idea, and the city team is continuing to have discussions and trying to see how best we can partner in order for none of these three schools to close. Second item for tonight is, tomorrow, Wednesday, from four PM to six PM, the city is going to be having our sandbag distribution. For any residents or business owners that live here in the city, at Frost Park, from four PM to six PM, it's going to be a drive-through, in which we'll be distributing sandbags in preparation for heavy rains that should be occurring this week, and possibly for the next couple of weeks. This sandbag distribution is only for Dana Beach residents, and you must have your ID showing your address. On Thursday, September twenty-sixth, at four-thirty PM, at four-thirty-four Southeast Third Street, we're going to be having our groundbreaking event for the Southeast Drainage Project. As mentioned earlier, this project is a thirty-million-dollar investment in the city's largest drainage project in its history. The groundbreaking, again, will be Thursday at four-thirty PM, at four-thirty-four Southeast Third Street. And last, this, in the future, Saturday, October twelfth, we'll be having our second annual Oktoberfest. This is going to be bigger and better than last year's, there's going to be a multitude of breweries and a celebration celebrating our one-hundred-and-twentieth anniversary, which is this year, and we'll be kicking it off with our second annual Oktoberfest, Saturday, October twelfth. And that concludes the manager's report. Thank you, mayor.
Okay, thank you, deputy manager. Up next is our city attorney, Eve Bootses.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, commissioners. The only thing I wanted to bring to your attention is item nine point five on the consent agenda, which is regarding the, I'm sorry, large user wastewater agreement with Hollywood. I went to the commission meeting last week at the City of Hollywood, and they've approved the tolling agreement as well. That's it, thank you.
All right, great work, Eve, great work. Okay, up next, city clerk.
Yes, thank you, mayor. Your next meeting is scheduled for October seventh, at five-thirty for the CRA, and seven PM for the commission, and just a reminder that the seventh is a Monday, it is not a Tuesday. That's all I have, mayor.
Okay, lucky number seven. Up next is our public safety reports, and we'll start with our captain, Jason Turella.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, commissioners, deputy city manager, city attorney. So, last week, our deputies responded to two-five-nine Southwest Ninth Street, they had a call reference a female who was screaming. Upon arrival, they actually located this elder female who had extensive injuries to her head, and she was bleeding profusely from her head. During their investigation, they discovered that she was battered, and she was actually hit in the head with a brick and a rock. Luckily, she was okay, she was taken to the hospital, she is okay. During their investigation, they determined that the suspect was a neighbor, and he had barricaded himself inside a trailer that was on the property. Our deputies surrounded the trailer, and through our investigative means, we were able to negotiate with the suspect, and we had him exit the trailer peacefully, and he was placed in custody without incident, and he was charged with several aggravated felonies and taken to the main jail. And I can happy to say that the elder lady who was battered, she is doing okay. This past weekend, during our operational plan over at Dana Point that is continuing, we had several juveniles come onto the property. They were riding bicycles, and what they do when they come in riding these bicycles, they actually circle vehicles, they circle cars, they intimidate cars, they come here to cause chaos. Our deputies observed a group, a pack, come in and start circling law-abiding vehicles that were in the property. Our deputies attempted to stop the bicycles, and two of the bicycles took off. Our vehicles gave pursuit, and they ended up getting in custody one of the bicycles down by Tropical Lakers, and they were able to get another suspect in the custody further out west. Both of these suspects were charged with fleeing and looting, operating light without bicycles, trespassing on the property, and both of them were juveniles, and they were both taken to Jif, where they were released to Jack. Later on that night in Dana Point, we also had about forty juveniles who responded to the property. Our deputies immediately made contact with them, trespassed four of them, the other thirty, thirty-five- 35 juveniles all left on their own without issues. Four of them were trespassed, and their parents came and got them from the property. But I can say there was no issues at all. These juveniles were all, came in from Miami. So that's where they were coming up from. Also, earlier last week at 22 Southwest 7th Avenue, our deputies were conducting traffic enforcement, and they made a traffic stop on a vehicle. Upon the vehicle stopping, the driver of the vehicle and the sole occupant immediately bailed out of the car. They gave a foot pursuit in about 200 yards through one of the neighborhoods, through the neighbor backyard. They were able to place the suspects in custody. Once going back to the vehicle, they observed numerous narcotics, crack cocaine, marijuana, scales, other narcotics, and a weapon inside the vehicle. That suspect was taken into custody, and all the narcotics and the weapons were seized. We're continuing all our checks at the city parks, our FEC railroad, and all the other areas of concern. We have the eye in the sky over at Chesterboard Park, and we're monitoring that. This last weekend, we had a really successful shred-a-thon in the prescription pill buyback that we do twice a year. It was very successful. We did that at Bass Pro Shops. We got many, many, many pills back, prescription pills, and we had a lot of people coming to have their stuff, their secure items shredded. This Wednesday coming up, I'm sorry, next Wednesday coming up, October 2nd, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM, we're doing Coffee with a Cop at the Coffee House located at 2612 Griffin Road. I hope you can come. I know last year Commissioner James came and the mayor. I hope everybody can come. Last time we did it at Starbucks, so we're going to change it this year. We're going to do it at the Coffee House. They were very happy to have us there. It'll be a different venue, and on the west side of the city this time, so we'll get a different influx of people coming. So again, it'll be October 2nd from 10 to 12, so I hope all of you guys can come out and make it if you can. And last but not least, again, I know I talked about it last time, but on Friday night, October 25th, at Frost Park, we're doing the Night Out with Law Enforcement in our Fire Festival. And that is a really big event for the city, and it's a beautiful event for our youth to come out, interact with law enforcement, interact with the city. And again, that's coming on October 25th, and we're in preparation with the city putting that together. So that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Captain. Appreciate it. Any questions?
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Up next, we have our BSO Fire Chief Sergio Pelissero.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Deputy City Manager, city staff, and the great citizens of Danny Beach. So tonight, I'll talk to you a little bit about community risk reduction. Just so you know, our department, both fire crews, the rescue crews, our fire inspectors, along with our deputies, we're always prepared to address the needs of our vulnerable population. Here in Danny Beach, when we respond to calls, we monitor any needs of our population and get them the proper help and care that they need. And we do this not just for our local community, but any of our seasonal residents. The one thing that's been near and dear to my heart is firefighter health, mental health initiative. So BSO, we've committed to support firefighter and police mental health by providing, we have peer support programs that can access other firefighters in case they have a bad call to talk about it. They also can access mental professional counseling services. We ensure that our crews have the proper person talk to them in case they witness something that could be traumatic. Currently, we're still waiting on our SAFER grant application. I spoke to Colin, who reached out to SAFER Grant, and they said hopefully by September 30th, we'll know something. So as soon as I know, you'll know. Our recruit class has already started. We have 14 new recruits. They'll be spending the next nine weeks, 360 hours with our training division. They're scheduled to graduate around November 15th. On October 13th, which is now a tradition for our recruits, they will be running in the Danny 5, Danny 5K. So I look forward to seeing everybody. I'm going to go and walk it like we always do, and we'll be there. Our team is monitoring Helene. Some of our task force members have already been deployed, and so that they're ready to assist in the aftermath of the storm. And hopefully, everybody stays safe here in Danny Beach. Does anybody have any questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Pelissero. Up next, we have citizen comments. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak tonight? Okay, no citizen comments, moving on. We are going to go to the consent agenda. Are there any items from the consent agenda that the commission wishes to pull? Commissioner James.
I'd like to make a motion to pass the consent agenda.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner James to approve the consent agenda. Vice Mayor Llewellyn?
Second.
I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. All right, consent agenda passes unanimously. Good work. Yeah. I don't know. I don't know if that's the case. All right, up for bids and requests for proposals? Item 10.1, please, Eve.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Danny Beach authorizing the ranking of firms that responded to the request for qualifications, 24-15, and tell design services for PJ Millie Aquatics Complex Improvements, and to authorize contract negotiations with the top-ranked responder. Providing for conflicts and effective date, this is a Parks and Recreation item.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Commissioners, Deputy City Manager Cassie Warren, Director of Parks and Recreation. This item is our next major step in the master plan now that CW Thomas Park is under construction. The next park is PJ Millie Park. So we have done the first step, which has gone out for the RFQ for the design services of the park, to actually design the park itself now, based on the master plan concept. There were 10 respondents to the bid. We had a very thorough review of the bids. We are coming to you with the top-ranked firm of Brimelo Ajamel for this project, and if you approve tonight, we will then negotiate a contract and bring that contract back before you all for approval to then move forward with the actual design.
Okay. Commissioner James?
Yes, thank you. And Brimelo Ajamel does such a fantastic job. I do have a question. It's been a very long time since we've passed the master plan, and I know that some of the concepts changed. Have you all looked at any changes that might be necessary to the facility, being that, you know, it's been since, what, 2018 or so since the master plan was approved?
Yes, actually, there's already one major change. There's a utility easement that goes right through where the building and the pool were plotted on the master plan, and we cannot put the building and the pool there because of that easement. So that will have to be moved to another location, which will shuffle some fields around, playgrounds around. But yes, we are looking at, you know, some incorporating different elements in different areas based off the concept that was provided.
Okay. Are those things going to be presented to us? Do we have an opportunity to have input?
Just like we did with CW, once we get to a point where we are ready to move along with the design and get it really deep into the design, we will bring that presentation before you all.
Thank you. And with that, I'll make a motion, Mayor, to pass 10.1.
Okay. I have a motion to pass 10.1. Vice Mayor Llewellyn?
Second.
And I have a second. Any further discussion? Okay, further discussion? Commissioner Salvino? Hold on one second.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Cassie, I know that we, on the master plan, was originally, we discussed it many, a long time ago, and now you're coming up with this here, too, and they're going to do a little revision because of the easement you were just talking about. But also, we had talked also about, on the master plan, changing a little bit, too, about the, they were going to do work on the flooding issue over there at the same time. Is that, is that can all come back up on the changes as well to present to us at the same time? Or, because I just want to make sure that we don't do all the master plan work, and then the flooding gets, comes in, then we have to do it all over again.
No, that's our first step, is, and that was part of our review process with our ranked firms, is making sure that they will, they can work hand in hand with the design firm that Public Services and Denser is bringing onboard to do the drainage area as well.
Thank you.
Okay. I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. All right. Item 10.1 passes unanimously. Now item 10.2, please, Eve.
A resolution of the City Commission authorizing the ranking of firms that responded to the RFQ 24-19, Design Services for Olson Middle School Park Project, and to authorize contract negotiations with the top-ranked responder, providing for conflicts and effective date, Parks and Recreation.
Good evening again, Cassie Warren, Director of Parks and Rec. This item is our next step in the land lease we have with Broward County for the old Olson Middle School property. We are, have gone out again for the bid of the design services, which is our first step. We received 14 qualified submittals. We reviewed those submittals. Tonight, we are bringing before you the top-ranked firm of Walter Zachariah as the recommended top-ranked firm for this project. If approved tonight, we will negotiate the contract with this top-ranked firm and then bring that before City Commission, the contract once complete.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner James?
Another question. I know that we've been having several conversations with Olson Middle School. I just want to ensure or to ask what measures or safety measures for us as a commission were put into place before we go far down this road with Olson, seeing how the school board kind of changes direction a lot. I wasn't at the meetings, but I would like to know that conversation and what was stated so that I am comfortable with moving forward and, you know, budgeting $5 million on a property that may or may not, you know, we don't have any clear direction.
Yes, Commissioner James, Candido Sococruz, Deputy City Manager. As you stated, we do have an agreement. We do have an agreement with terms. The school board is very supportive of the agreement. The superintendent is very supportive of the agreement. He's grateful for the agreement. As a matter of fact, our discussions have been how to create programs and magnet programs around the sports theme due to this park. So everything, every discussion we have had with the superintendent, his executive team, and the school board has all indicated that they want us to move forward, and that the only issue is working out the empty space in the facility and how we could partner. And there's been no indication as far as anything that moves forward, it will impact this park and this new construction. So we will continue to have this dialogue with our city attorney, the school attorneys, just to ensure that our agreement is strong and that this is something that's not going to impact us in a negative way.
I guess my, I guess the question is maybe to the city attorney, then, is there anything legally binding that protects us or protects the school from changing their minds as, you know, we have new leaders that are there, we have a new superintendent that's there? We've seen a lot of changes while we've been up here, but is there anything that protects us in our financial investment of this property if they decide with all the great things that you all are negotiating with, that it's not enough, and they still want to go a different direction with the school?
The, I haven't looked at the agreement recently, so I'll pull that back up, but I recall that there are provisions, if we're spending the money, that they, we are secured in those funds and the use that we have, and if they try and take it away, they have to reimburse us. But I'll get you the exact language tomorrow morning.
Thank you so much. And with that, I'll make a motion.
How many years is the land lease, Eve?
25.
Over 30 years.
I think it's 25, and then a 25-year renewal.
Okay. Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. Okay, motion from Commissioner James. Vice Mayor Llewellyn?
Second.
I have a second from Vice Mayor Llewellyn for item 10.2. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. All right, item 10.2 passes. Okay, yeah. There you go, Cassie. Item 10.3, please, Eve.
A resolution of the City Commission authorizing the award of the bid 2418 Mullican Park Improvements to Behar Construction, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $615,461 in contingency funds, providing for conflicts and effective date, Parks and Recreation.
This is the, Cassie Warren, Director of Parks and Recreation. This is the bid for the construction services of the Firdap Grant Park, Firdap Fund at Mullican Park. The design services was complete after the design. Now we bid out the construction services. Kim Lee Horn, who was our design services company, reviewed all of the six, we received six respondents. They reviewed all of the respondents, and they heavily recommend that we proceed with the lowest-ranked firm of Behar Construction, Inc., in the amount of the $1,615,000 with the $50,000 contingency. So hopefully, we'll have a shovel in the ground here in the next month or two.
Perfect. Perfect. Thank you. Commissioner James?
I'd like to make a motion to approve item 10.3.
All right. Motion to approve item 10.3 by Commissioner James. Vice Mayor Llewellyn?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. All right. Item 10.3 passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Can I just say something real quick?
Sure, please.
I just want to thank Parks and Rec for moving this all along so quickly. There's, that's a lot of work that's been done right there. So, thank you.
Excellent work, excellent work. Yeah, Mullican Park, our last resolution, that's a smaller park, so that's something that we could accomplish very quickly, just like in Maluka Gardens, the park that they did over there. So it's a similar situation, and, you know, but that was three parks in a row that we just approved, so that's, that's exciting, and it's, you know, money spent right, if you ask me, when it comes to investing in our city. All right, Eve, item 10.4.
A resolution of the City Commission authorizing the ranking of consulting firms for RFQ 2412 Design Services for the Services for the Northwest First Street Complete Streets Improvement Project, and selecting Kim Lee Horn and Associates as the first-ranked firm, providing for conflicts and effective date, public services.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Denser Rosaird, Deputy Public Service Director, City Engineer. We RFQ this project for design, and Kim Lee Horn and Associates, Inc. is chosen to be the most-ranked firm, and they are going to do ADA ramps and sidewalks and crosswalk improvements. And after, after we, after rank is approved, we are going to negotiate with the firm to award the contract to them.
All right. Thank you very much. Denser? Commissioner James?
Denser, what's the timeline for the project?
We haven't started the design, but it should be about six months.
So design is six months, and then how much, how long would construction take?
We don't have the design yet, but the construction should take about six to nine months.
Okay.
It depends on the design, because public will also input for this design as well, because we are going to have the public meetings.
Okay. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve 10.4, Mayor.
Okay. I have a motion for item 10.4. You want a question? Okay. Well, I'll bring it in for further discussion. Vice Mayor Llewellyn?
I'll second it, but I, I just, I also had a quick question.
Oh, you had a question?
Yeah. Just, but I'm going to second it, but I just was curious. So that's the Arts and Entertainment District, yes?
Northwest First, from Bryant Road all the way to the federal.
Okay. Good. Perfect. Thank you. That's fine.
Okay. I have a second for a discussion. Commissioner Dave?
I just, that was my question, but I didn't hear it clearly. Where, what area is it covering? And I just didn't hear exactly the whole area.
Except the railroad tracks area, because that's where FEC corridor.
Okay. And I'm glad you said that, because we do still get a lot of questions about the railroad track and the safety of that area. Is there anything that you can offer as to, you know, who owns what roads and different things like that? I really don't want to open up a can of worms, but it has been a dangerous area for a very long time, and I get this question over and over again. So just if you could address that area in a certain way so that it might help our public understand that we understand what's going on over there and what we can and cannot do about that.
Absolutely. Commissioner James, we have been meeting with Metropolitan Planning Organization, as well as the FEC professionals, for improvements. We are going to provide $90,000, a little bit over $90,000, and Broward County is going to pay the rest of it. I think the total is $700,000 or more. We are going to do some improvements, not only our city, but also Broward County, City of Hollywood, City of Oakland Park, City of Wilton Manor. We are going to do some improvements. Not only our city, but also Broward County, City of Hollywood, City of Oakland Park, City of Wilton Manners, and City of Pompano Beach are also doing some improvements as well for these railroad tracks. But we are still working with them and then what type of improvements and all the details.
So, it is a collaborative effort. We are working on it, and it is going forward. So, I just want to make sure that we stay updated and that I'm able to give the public accurate information.
Absolutely, every three weeks or so, we meet with them, yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner James?
Yes, I was just gonna add a little bit of clarification to what Commissioner Davis said. I can remember, I don't know, seven years ago or six years ago when we were discussing, I'm not sure if Vice Mayor or Commissioner Salvino was on the board. It was with the CRA and we were discussing the two locations. One was Dania Beach Boulevard and one was Northwest First Street and the railroad tracks. And the amount of money that it was going to take to try and have sidewalks on each side of it, because that is a huge safety concern. And at that time, it wasn't feasible for us financially to be able to do that. So, with this design, is it going to include? Like, I know that we altered a little bit the one on Dania Beach Boulevard, but is it also going to include safety rails and sidewalks? Because the amount of people that we see in wheelchairs and now they've put that divided there, so it squeezes just a little more. It is a dangerous intersection, so I'm not sure if that whole area is included and to what extent, because I don't, just want it widened, I would like.
As of now, it's not included, but we are discussing with them and then we may pay additional fees to include that area as well.
Can you please bring that back to us? I would love to be able to support that. I mean, that should be a no-brainer, to include sidewalks when we have, you know, railroad crossings.
Yeah, it's going to be some changes and improvements, so we can definitely discuss with them to add those ones to see how much it's gonna cost us. Everything is so preliminary right now, but definitely we can bring them to their attention. That's not a problem.
Thank you, Denture.
Welcome.
Denture, this is a FERDAP grant. How much money did we get from FERDAP and how much are we paying?
This Northwest First?
Yeah.
Well, actually, everything is covered with FDOT's Complete Street Grant. So, thanks to our city manager, deputy, and Fernando and Colin, everybody worked together and it's covered by FDOT as of now.
It's all covered by FDOT?
Yes.
Perfect.
No problem.
Alright, just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Welcome.
Alright, so I have a motion in a second on the table. All in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed say nay. Alright, item 10.4 passes unanimously. Moving along, we don't have any quasi-judicial and public hearing items, so we're gonna move to our first reading on item 12.1. Please, Eve.
An ordinance of the city commission of the City of Dania Beach, Florida, pursuant to section 22-7A of the city's Code of Ordinances, authorizing co-designation of a portion of Northwest Second Street between Northwest Fourth Avenue and Northwest Fourteenth Way to be known as Northwest Second Street and Henry N. White Senior Street, after holding two public hearings and after four-fifths vote of the entire city commission, providing for conflicts, severability, and effective date, this is community development.
Good evening, Corinne LaJoy, Deputy Director in Community Development. This is an application for co-designation to honor Mr. White. So, the roadway section is north, it's Northwest Second Street, which ranges from the entire length of Northwest Second. So, it goes from the railroad tracks all the way west to the canal right before Bryan Road. The application did go to the Parks and Recreation and Cultural Advisory Board, I think is the name of it, and they recommended approval of the request to you as the commission. And the Code of Ordinances requires two readings, so this is first reading this evening. And I know the family's here as well, if you want to speak with them. Any questions, staff?
Any questions? Commissioner James?
No, I don't. Is it a public hearing?
It is.
Yes, this is a public hearing. It's a public hearing. Does anybody wish to speak on this item? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this item? Alright.
I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 12.1.
Okay, I have a motion to approve item 12.1. Commissioner Davis?
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Davis. Alright, let's call it to a vote. This one, let's do a vote, Alora, please.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Oh, sorry, yes.
Commissioner Salvino?
Hold on, let me, go ahead.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Llewellyn?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes, yes and yes for me, Vice Mayor.
For the record, Vice Mayor said yes. Five-zero, motion passes, Mayor.
Alright, thank you very much. Okay, we don't have, hey, congratulations to the White family. Alright, just, uh, let's do, for what that item was, it was to designate the street, as you heard from Corinne. And Henry White Senior was born and raised in Dania, and they, according to this record, he was the first black baby born in the city. And he's had countless family that lives in the city, still lives in the city. And, you know, this guy's been around since our inception of Dania. So, you know, I think he passed away, I don't know, sometime in the 80s, I believe. I'm trying to read it right now. But that's, that's some history right there. It's nice to rename a street. Okay, let's move on. We have no second reading ordinances. We have no discussion and possible action. So, we're gonna go to appointments. On the Education Advisory Board, we have two vacancies. And so, we have Vice Mayor and then Commissioner James. You guys have two vacancies on the Education Advisory Board. Vice Mayor?
I have a question. I do not have appointees, and I apologize, but I have a question. Are we going to need to make these appointments again in November? No?
It depends. Some of the boards do run concurrent with your, yeah, your seat. I'd have to get back to you to see which boards and how that works, because they all are a little different.
Because if that's the case, I'm kind of hesitant to, you know, appoint somebody now and then have to either, you know. Anyway, so I don't have anybody, I apologize, but I'll defer.
Okay, Commissioner James? One second.
Rin, Maddie, I'll give you her address. I don't have her address, actually. She lives in Dania, though. Um, nah, oh, I'm not gonna give you her number either. I'll email it to you.
Okay, what about for the Marine Advisory Board? Okay, Commissioner Salvino?
Yes, thank you. His name is, I will tell you in one second, Robert. His last name is O S T R O V. Okay? And I can give you the address and phone number if you'd like.
We'll reach out to them. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, if you need an appointment for the Marine Advisory Board, I could give you a suggestion. His name, Michael Porter. He's on the Green Advisory Board. He's a local boater. Yeah?
Go ahead, let's do it.
Alright, thanks, Vice Mayor. That's how we get it done. I thought I'd throw you a bone there. Michael Porter, I'll give you his information.
I would like to know, though, about these boards for, which ones are concurrent, which ones are not.
Okay. Alright, wonderful. Commissioner James?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the appointments.
Okay, motion to approve the appointments. Do I have a second? I have, Vice Mayor Llewellyn?
Second.
Second, alright, all in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed say nay. Okay, the appointments are approved, wonderful. Alright, now for Commissioner comments. We will start with Commissioner Joyce Davis.
We are rocking and rolling today.
Yes, we are.
Good job, Mayor. I want to first start off, good evening, everyone. And I had the amazing opportunity to attend the Collins Partners Breakfast this morning. And Dr. Jackson has just done a phenomenal job bringing our BSO Fire, our businesses, our churches, all parts, all segments of the community. The Mobile Food Pantry is just wonderful organizations that bringing all the different parts of the community together to see how we can support one another and not just at Collins. Dr. Jackson is very generous in extending her reach with the community to Dania Elementary and to Olson Middle. So, the Mobile Food Pantry, if you don't know about it, is going to be extending to Bethune. It's going to be with Dania Elementary and Olson. So, I just really want to commend Dr. Jackson on bringing all parts of the community together this morning. We had a wonderful breakfast, wonderful thoughtful conversations with our community stakeholders. When we all come together and bring different things to the table, we really can do a lot more together. So, I really want to thank her for that breakfast this morning. I also had the opportunity to attend the Jewish Women's Circle of the Habad of Dania Beach, and we just had a wonderful sisterhood of a time making challah bread, my first time making challah bread. So, I want to thank Mushka and the Habad of Dania Beach for providing such a wonderful event that we talked about and each one of us read the name of one of the hostages and it was, it was beautiful, and I want to thank them for being a wonderful part of our community. Lastly, it is the last meeting before the budget, so I want to read my contingency funds. I have, for post 304, I'm gonna go with the Women's Auxiliary, $2,500 for their Girl State Program. And needs for the Women's Auxiliary, it is separate from the Legion. They have a different tax ID. Olson Middle School, $3,000 for their robotics program. Collins Elementary School, $2,000 for their Respect Program and Leadership Lunch. Dania Elementary, $2,000 for their Teacher Appreciation Week and Program. Lions Club, $1,000 for helping with us, the back-to-school supplies. The Historical Society, $1,000. One, Lighthouse for Students, $4,100 for their swimming program. The Mystic Forest Foundation, who the childhood cancer we had here tonight, $1,000. And Gracefully Aging Breast Cancer Table for October the 5th, $300. And with that, I'm asking your approvals for those items, and we'll be done.
Okay, Frank, please. Yeah.
What?
We need to log, we need to log it to make sure we have enough. Can we come back to it, Frank?
I'm lying.
Okay, they're writing it down. They need to log it all down, they said, to make sure.
Oh, I itemized it based on what Mike Sean told me I had left.
They're waiting for verification.
Oh, okay.
Once we have verification, we'll come right back to it.
Okay.
But do I have approval, contingent on, it checks out with Frank? Yep, perfect.
Thank you.
Wonderful, alright, thank you. Alright, Commissioner James?
Yes, I don't have many comments to say. Just keep my family in, your prayers. We will be burying two family members within the last seven days, and so it's been rough for our family. And so, um, keep us in your prayers. That's it for that. And then I did send my contingency requests prior to the meeting. One of those is to support the Thanksgiving Drive that my organization has annually with support from the city and BSO. That request is for $5,000. Royalty is a nonprofit program that is hosted here at CW Thomas Park and has been here for over, what, 12 years? It's a girls' mentoring program. Wanted to give them $3,500. And then Loretta's Heart Care, who has serviced our seniors in Saratoga and Gracefully Aging with Chicky Seniors and just the different assisted living facilities and nursing homes to provide them with. This year will be for a seniors' Christmas, $3,500. I do have a conflict of interest form that I will fill out from the city attorney to protect myself and my affiliation that I have with any of these organizations. All three are listed. And other than that, I am seeking approval for these funds.
Okay, do I have consensus? Alright, I see a consensus. Good job, Commissioner James. Okay, moving on to Commissioner Salvino.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got supporting Tamara James Foundation for the Turkey Drive. I know that she does a lot, coming up with Thanksgiving, a lot of food to the families. I have $5,000 to that. The American Legion 304 and the American Legion 209, both are American Legion posts, $2,500 each. Dania Beach Lions Club, $1,500. The Dania Beach Historical Society, $1,000. The Dania Beach Parks and Recreation Youth Summer Camp, $1,000. The Dania Beach Parks and Recreation After-School Program Scholarships, $1,000. And tonight, I had money left over and I'd like to give $1,000 to the Mystic Forest Foundation as well. And I know I still have a little bit left, but I'll bank it.
Roll over.
Roll over.
Alright, do I have consensus for Commissioner Salvino's contingency request? Alright, I see contingency, I mean, I see consensus. Anything else, Commissioner Salvino?
I love you guys, man.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Llewellyn?
Yes, so I sent mine in earlier as well, and I have a couple extra that I need, because I still had some left over. But, so the first thing is, Olson Middle School is doing these branded reusable Yetis, basically, that will have the Dania Beach logo as well as their school logo on them. To get them for all of the students, it's about $9,000. So, that's what I am requesting for that. Also, and I also did check the same things that you asked about the school and what the situation was, so I feel fairly confident that it's still gonna be there. So, I'm feeling good about it. Anyway, the next thing is, I've mentioned this group before. It's called Matt Broward. It's a multi-agency homeless task force. They, our homeless outreach team works with them. They, the City of Dania Beach is, we are members of this group, our police department is. And they work on reunification of homeless individuals, and part of that requires funds, because sometimes they have to send people out on a bus. They might have to send them on an airplane. They might need to give them housing for a few days until they get into the next place that they're going. And they do follow up, and they do make sure that people are actually staying where they say that they're going to be staying, and they check in. And in fact, they don't, they don't reimburse the funds until they are certain of that. So, that's the next one. And then I had two others, because I did still have some left over. One is $2,000 to the teen program for the summer, not the summer camps, the winter break and spring break through Parks and Rec, and then $1,000 to the Lions.
Okay, do I have consensus?
Just one thing.
You sent it ahead of time, too, right? Yeah.
Yeah, some of it, just the last two I did not, but they...
We gotta wait for approval from Frank, right?
The $2,000 to the teen program with the city and $1,000 to the Lions Club.
And just one thing, since they're using the logo for the Yetis, if we can have authorization from the commission to use the logo. I got your back.
I see it, we have authorization.
You're all good.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And with, other than that, just, storm's not coming this way, but we're probably gonna get a lot of rain, so just everybody be safe. And that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor. Okay, yeah, this is the end of the budget. So, with my contingency, I would like to invest $5,000 in both of our American Legion posts, post 304 and post 209, so $5,000 to each post. $4,000 to our Dania Beach Historical Society. $2,325 to the Dania Beach Lions Club and $2,325 to our Dania Beach Improvement Committee. That is the remainder of my contingency fund. Do I have consensus? Alright, we have consensus. Hey, great job, Commissioners, I must say. What, good job, that's how you support our community, it's how you support our civic organizations. Oh, go ahead, Frank.
Sorry, I just want to let you know, Commissioner Davis, you're short by about $2,000.[1742.64]
$2,000. Yeah, we just, we just looked at the numbers again. I'm not sure what you were going by, but we got a cut about $1,950. $1,950.
Could we take her balance out of the commission contingency?
Yes.
Yeah. We could just, we could take it out of the...
But I did forget someone, so I might have to take a little bit more. Can we, can we give $2,000 to Love Our Nation? I did not give $2,000 to Love Our Nation.
Do I have approval from the commission on the commission contingency for...
Sure.
L O N, okay?
I forgot. I'm awful.
Did you get that, Frank? So, an additional two.
How did I know? I did this...
Okay, and yeah, as long as everyone's okay with the other $2,000, we'll just, we'll move it from somewhere else. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Hold on, Frank. Commissioner James?
Yes, I do have a question. And I want to know this, and not so we can spend it, okay? How much do we have left in our commission contingency?
Before now, there was around $150,000 left.
Okay, I just want that to be on record, because we are rolling it over to the next fiscal year. But however, I did want to ask, I guess, Commissioner Davis, because I was unable to come to the partnership meeting today, and Dr. Tracy Jackson was supposed to call me, and I, I know she's traveling to DC. Were there any things on that list? Because I told her that I would take care of some of those things, and maybe we can come back at the next meeting and discuss those, but I do want to be able to support our schools if they have those requests from us. So, were there any other things that you had on there that we could potentially...
She has a whole list of things.
Okay, I'll come back next meeting. Yeah, I'll come back next meeting. I know the budget will be passed, but clearly we have this amount, and we get to get that out of our contingent, our commission contingency next meeting, if that is okay with the rest of you all. Yeah, alright, thank you.
Commissioner Salvino?
Thank you. The shortage on Commissioner Davis's contingency, I'd prefer to give my balance to that and not go into the commission contingency, because I think we establish that we're getting out of the realm of our personal contingency, and now we're going back to the city, and I don't know if that's the right way to go. I mean, I have enough to cover what she's short in mind, and I just, I don't know if that's the right way to go or not.
It all comes from the same place, pretty much.
Okay, well, I thought, well, yeah, but the difference is, if you allocate it for us to spend, and then we go back there, then other people are gonna start coming in, they're gonna start wanting more from others, our other contingency, and I just don't know if it's, I mean, it's up to the commission.
Well, this is it, this is...
I know, but I'm talking about in the future.
Well, yeah.
We're setting something else. Okay, I'm just, I'm just bringing it to everybody's attention. I've been here and done that before, and I see how it happens. And I think that it's best that we stay in our own contingency, and I have enough to give her, and that way she can utilize, I can put on there. It's just that if we go into the city's contingency, you're opening a can of worms for everybody to come back in next budget year, and they're gonna start asking for it out of there. I'm just letting you know, but you, as the commission, can make the choice.
When we add up the remainder of what's left between Commissioner Salvino, Commissioner James, and Vice Mayor Llewellyn, and combined with the shortage on Commissioner Davis, we're, we're short by $33, so it all balances out.
Okay.
Between the individual commissioner contingencies. If you want to just keep it like that.
There you go.
Thanks, Frank, that's why we have you.
I just wanted to make sure that my father...
Okay, wait, wait, one second. Commissioner Davis?
That you had my total amount of $16,900?
I have $18,900.
Well, that's what I was told that I had left in my contingency, was $16,900. So, I can do a little bit of math, but I, I have that in writing. So, I just want everybody to know, but still, thank you. For the record, I was told I had $16,900. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, back to my commissioner comments, just to wrap it up. This is a message, you know, to the public, if anybody's still listening, it's still kind of early of a meeting. Listen, from what I see with other cities, comparing Dania to other cities, our city keeps our residents very informed. With these core conversations that we've been having with our pioneer, that's been done. It, there's really nothing that we're trying to keep from anybody in any way. We're trying to put all the information out there well ahead of time, before, so before we make any decisions, for you to inform yourselves. And, you know, if you have more questions, feel free to call the commission, feel free to call the city. Everybody here, I've never seen, just, everybody's very responsive, from our first responders to our police chief to our fire chief, you know, all the way to our department, to our code department, you know, even to our security guard at the door. Everybody's responsive, everybody's very, you know, we're informative here, alright? And the pioneer, I think, really elevated us when it came to informing the residents. So, when you get the pioneer in the mail, make sure you hold on to it, put it on your coffee table, keep it out there. It, it might be a useful tool for you in the future when you have questions about the city. So, we just entered the fall season, and not only does our Parks and Rec team handle our Parks and Recreation, but they also handle our city events, and we have a slew of Dania After Dark events coming up. We're very excited for it, very excited for the holiday season here in Dania Beach, all the way from, you know, starting with our, from Halloween all the way to Christmas. It's gonna be a great time. We're celebrating our 120th birthday here, and it's just an exciting time to be a part of Dania Beach, whether you're a resident, you're a business, or you're working for the city. It's a wonderful time to be a part of Dania Beach. Just wanted to remind everybody of that. So, with that, thank you, every...
Did you do your account?
Yep. With that, thank you, everybody. Have a great night.
I didn't mean to interrupt you.
You're alright.